Any other public comments?
Yeah.
I think none, that concludes public comments. Do we have any council comments? Josh?
Yep, just say, I did speak to councilmember Janie Shields, who is typically with us. She did have a surgery. She's, I talked to her today, and she is recovering well. Actually, it was really good news to hear, so she's finally out and about. And I think for most of the folks who have seen her, it's been a real challenge. So she apologized for not being here tonight, but did say that she's healing quickly, and she should be back pretty quickly. So, the other thing I'll say is, I did get a request, and was supposed to pass it off to the county executive. A couple folks in the community, including, you know, Craig Fons, has done a fantastic job with trash cleanup, as well as Melissa Cullen, Michelle Nelson, so many others. They were requesting that the county maybe consider and adopt a county road program, some sort of program where community members or individuals could actually say that this is our space of land, that we're going to make sure that we keep it clean. So, I'm bringing it out to the public. I said I would. I think it's a good idea. I'd be happy to do so, and, yeah.
We definitely can talk about that. There's been a couple phone calls of very, a lot of roads that have a lot of trash on them, so I would love to talk to you about that.
I was gonna, are you done? I was gonna ask, on top of that, I know the corrections, right, they pick up trash. Are we doing that again, or is that something that's-
Later on.
Okay, we haven't-
In the session.
Because they're, okay, that's later on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, good.
Yeah.
Entertained a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions followed by closed work sessions pursuant to local government article section 3-305B1 as follows: "To discuss the pay grade and salary that affects one or more specific employees to protect the confidentiality of the employee, and to discuss the appointment of a director for the Department of Corrections to protect the confidentiality of the individual."
So moved.
So moved, second? All those in favor? Oppose? Meetings adjourned. This time, we go into open work session. The first item on the agenda is Wycomico County Liquor Dispensaries. As somewhat of a preface, and in line with what was shared by Mr. Dennis and Mr. Roskovich, I think, without getting ahead of ourselves, in numerous conversations since the last work session, where I think this council is trying to go towards is to keeping the existing dispensary as is. We're simply trying to free up the wholesale market, so that the larger purchasers do not have to buy from the dispensary, they can simply buy from the distributor if they so choose to do so. So it's been modified much, much more than where it was originally, when everybody said we're going to get rid of the liquor stores completely, because there was a lot of feedback that said, no, there are some individuals and some organizations that can take advantage of the dispensary as it is. So, granted, we eliminated some of the competition, and I think that's a good thing. We certainly aren't being really cavalier about the costs. I appreciate, Mr. Taylor, what you brought to the table, and you always do extensive work. I think we've recognized initially that the expenses were about $900,000, which was the revenues that we're receiving. But if you look at what the wholesale is, specifically, the number's more in line with about $200,000 to $300,000, as I can say for right now. I think the longer we get into this work session today, maybe we'll have a better idea of that number. So, it's not an astronomical number, we're not being so cavalier about it, so that the state can say, oh, you know, you're not being responsible with the funding. I think, you know, we're putting back into the marketplace, and we're also allowing the free-market enterprise system to do what it's supposed to do, no different than what practically every single county in the state of Maryland is doing right now. So, I thought I would preface that with everyone, since I could tell from some of the public comments that not everyone's quite aware of how far this maybe has transitioned. And again, as a council, we will be reviewing that with the executive and the director administration, and also members of the Liquor Control Board. I'd like to thank the Board of Licensed Commissioners, who are about in this general area over here. We thank you very much for being here. And of course, we have the members of the Liquor Control Board. Thank you. And if you could, before we get started, state your name and your position, the reason you're here today. Thank you.
I'm Justin Collis, the general manager of the dispensary system.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Victor Laws, attorney for the Liquor Control Board. And we have with us two members of the gubernatorial-appointed Liquor Control Board. Jeanette Taylor and Melody Carter are here.
Hello.
And Don Ewalt, the longtime chairman of the board, was unable to be here. He's out of state at this point.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Council president, what is coming around is actually a letter from Assistant Attorney General's office, so the attorney general, stating that the disparity grant has nothing to do with the liquor laws. Somerset County just, you know, got rid of their dispensary system altogether, did not lose their disparity grant. So, we went above and beyond and got an opinion right here that shows that our disparity grant will not go away.
Mr. Laws, would you like to start?
If I may, thank you, Mr. Cannon. We asked for the opportunity to come before you, and we appreciate the opportunity given to us, because we were not a party to the work session that you had on January 17. So, some of the facts are well-known, some of the facts are not as well-known. I delivered a letter, actually, I emailed it to the county, so that, the county council, so that hopefully all of you received it. I apologize for the lateness of that. Wasn't able to get it out until late this afternoon, partly because I wasn't sure how much time we would be afforded, and I probably had a few things to say there that I may not have time to cover tonight. The fiscal impact of the Liquor Control Board is probably well-known. The Liquor Board controls about, or contributes about a million dollars to the county's bottom line annually these days. In the past five years, and there's a chart attached to my letter, which is also part of the audit, that I furnished the audit to the county attorney and to all members of the county council a day or two ago. So, you see the upward trend of the money contributed to the county, and you see the relative trend of wholesale as a part of the, as a part of the returns achieved by the Liquor Control Board. So, with revenues of about $11.7 million, the wholesale portion of that these days is $3.4 million, so it's nearly 30%. A year ago, it was about 26%. So, it is a significant part of the Liquor Board or dispensary operation. So, not only is the Liquor Board a job creator, there are about 40 quality jobs there, with decent wages, health insurance, and a defined contribution plan for the employees. It has a significant impact on the county financially. And if the wholesale is altered, I think it would have the same effect that Chairman Ewalt testified to the county council a couple of years ago, when there was a discussion about getting out of wine sales. Wine sales are not a huge part of what the Liquor Control Board does, but he testified at that time that eliminating wine sales would cost about four jobs. I think if you alter or eliminate the wholesale operation, it would probably have at least that much of an impact, if not more. The dollar amount is hard to predict, but there would be a significant impact. The leaders of the Liquor Control Board are community leaders. Melody Carter's well-known for her charitable work all across the county. Jeanette Taylor is a former restaurant owner, who brings significant expertise to the table. The past members of Liquor Control Board are like a who's who of Wycomico County. They're listed in my letter, but these have all been community leaders who are acting in the, in the public interest. Something was said, I think, in one of the public comments, or perhaps by the chair, about the demise of the dispensary system in Somerset County and in Worcester County. There were factors at play there that aren't involved here at all. Worcester County was importing liquor, wholesale liquor illegally from out of state, and was fined by the Comptroller's Office for misfeasance and illegal purchases. And Worcester County frankly is just different than Wycomico County. It's geographically more spread out. The summer season in Ocean City is a tidal wave of demand for liquor that has nothing comparable in Wycomico County. The Worcester County experiment is precisely what I'm hearing discussed here, or it's one of the things being discussed here, which is a hybrid system that would combine the benefits of the private sector with the current benefits of the existing system. That didn't work in Worcester County. Within a decade, it was unable to compete, either at retail or at wholesale, and it went out of business. The Somerset County situation was a victim of significant embezzlement by a store manager who was convicted in a court of law, and they had a lack of internal controls, and they had a lot of trouble finding quality help, that finally persuaded the county commissioners to close the dispensary. None of those factors have been issues here. It isn't just the money, but there is value provided by the dispensary system to smaller vendors and the restaurants around the county. You heard one of the public comments by a consumer who attested to some of those benefits. But I'm going to ask Mr. Collis here, the general manager, who's been in the industry for a long time, he's been the manager of the dispensary for nearly 20 years, I think it's 19 and a half years, and had beverage, alcoholic beverage experience even before that, so he knows the waterfront. But I'm going to ask him to distribute to each council person, if we may, some materials, and ask him to kind of interpret it, or to explain it to you, and how the wholesale operation does benefit the retailers and the restaurants. Can you explain the materials you brought, and what that means?
All right, the first, the first page is just five random items that I pulled out of invoices, that we buy at such a volume, that our price is considerably less than any account is going to be able to achieve on their own. So we can just take the first two, I don't need to go through the whole page with you. You can take that in later, when you have time. So the first item would be a 1.75 liter of Crown Royal. After the discount on the invoices, it's $48.44 to a bar or restaurant. The bar's cost from the distributors is $49.49. Now, if they don't buy an entire case, there's an extra $1.55 added to each bottle, because the union employees at the distributors actually had to touch the bottle. That is listed in the Beverage Journal at the beginning of the section for every distributor in the state of Maryland. It's not made up. If you don't buy full cases, you will pay that. So, the cost with the bottle charge is now $51.04. If you take the dispensary's price, it's $2.60 less than they can buy directly from the wholesaler. Or, it's a $1.05 cheaper if they buy full cases and don't pay the bottle charge. Jameson Irish Whiskey 750Ml, second item. Bar's cost from the dispensary, $25.21. Bar's cost from the distributor, $26.92, plus a $1.60 bottle charge if you're not buying full cases. Therefore, the cost with the bottle charge is now $28.52. The dispensary is $3.31 less to the bar and restaurant, or it's a $1.71 cheaper, even if they're buying full cases. The other three items will just give you the same information. The second item in the packet is an invoice from a local customer, the name has been redacted out of common courtesy.
So what does that show, Justin?
Basically, what, this is the top sheet, is the dispensary invoice to that customer. You will see the total for those items is $937.79. On that second form, that is every single item on that invoice from the dispensary in the same order. The first column is the price per bottle that they would pay directly from the distributor. The second column is the extended price, i.e., the first item, Malibu Leaders, they ordered two, so column one times two is column two. The third column is the bottle charges that would be added, because they're not buying full cases. The fourth column, obviously, is the item total. So, when you get to the bottom, you will see that I've listed an open-market total, that would have been the price from the distributor, would have been $1,009.26. The cost they paid the dispensary was $937.79. They saved $71.47 that week buying from the distributor. If they ordered the same amount and same product, every week, 52 weeks a year, they saved $3,664.44 buying it from the dispensary, while it produces profit for the taxpayers. Now-
If I could ask you, could I ask you one question, Mr. Collins? Thank you for the information here. If, if these numbers hold true, why is it that we're, we are hearing from so many of these individuals and these companies that they want to have the option to buy it directly from the distributor? Because they have to know what that would cost them-
Just a random guess. They don't utilize the Beverage Journal very often. Or, they're under the impression that they'll get my prices. My prices are significantly lower because of the quantities that we buy.
They will still be able, hopefully, and I'm being a little presumptuous here, but if this works out, I think, in what we're trying to do, they will still be able to purchase from your dispensary at wholesale prices. That will not go away. The only thing we're looking to change is the state law that says they, they shall, and they must, purchase from the dispensary. So we're kind of just moving this a little bit where it gives them the option, whereas they, they may do so, but they're not held under that obligation. So they, they would still be able to purchase wholesale from your store.
I understand. But you might not be able to hold your price if you can't buy in that volume, isn't that right?
The ripple effect is-
It's sort of a vicious cycle.
Yeah. My buying power goes down, therefore my cost goes up. Therefore, the cost on the shelves goes up at retail, so the taxpayer pays more in the liquor stores. And eventually, the smaller accounts, which is the majority of them, who can't buy in volume, who are still going to be purchasing from the dispensary, will end up paying more for the products, because I've lost buying power. So, the taxpayer pays more, the smaller accounts pays more, and the contribution to the county budget goes down simultaneously.
What has happened in all the other counties throughout the state of Maryland where they don't have a dispensary system in place?
Well, there was a fairly prominent person here in Salisbury, who went to Worcester County and opened up a bar and restaurant. And they told several of us, but asked to not have their name put out, that when they went open in Worcester County, his wholesale prices went up 30%, because there was no dispensary system. So, he was forced to buy at the one bottle or one-case price in the Beverage Journal, whereas prior to that, he was enjoying the benefit of the buying power of their dispensary system.
Sorry to interrupt, I didn't want to get too far away.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, at the bottom of this invoice, on the left side, you will see that neither Southern Glazier distributors nor Republic National would have delivered to them that week, because they did not make the mandatory minimums. They did not meet the minimum order.
So you're saying, in addition to price, there are quantity advantages to the dispensary system?
Exactly. The bottom right, if we want to just take the bottle charges out for the sake of the discussion, that's never going to happen, the distributors won't do that, but let's say that they did. The bottle charges on this invoice add up to $67.80. If they saved $71.47 by buying it from the dispensary, they still saved $3.67 over what they would have paid the distributor, even without the bottle charges, which will never happen. The third page is a printout of the minimum orders and bottle charges from the three distributors.
Can, can other counties with restaurants come to our county and buy from our dispensaries?
I don't believe that's legal, no.
That's not legal?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
And I don't believe in any other county, a bar and restaurant can go to a liquor store, purchase product, and take it back to the restaurant. So the, they can buy from the distributor, or the dispensary system's going to be a tall order. I don't believe that exists anywhere. The fourth page is that same invoice in order. And in parentheses, next to each item, you will see the amount of product, the minimum amount that we have to buy to get our pricing. So, if they wanted to only stock this few products in their bar, in order to receive dispensary pricing and actually have an argument, they would spend $10,485.84 on that particular delivery, just to handle that few number of products. And because you will hear after that, that, no, I'll get cheaper prices, next piece of information is every item in order, photocopied from the Beverage Journal, and the price of that item is highlighted for what they would pay without the dispensary. That's directly out of the Beverage Journal for the state of Maryland. So, that's mathematical evidence right there, that, I'm not going to say that it's dishonest. I'm going to say that since this has been handled for them for so long, I don't think that they fully understand my prices. My prices aren't in this boat, because of the amount we buy. I've twisted the arm of the distributors for the last five years now, and it's all starting to actually pay off. More and more of the suppliers are coming to the table and offering us a volume price that's not really available most anywhere else, because they know we're going to buy 100, 200, 300 cases of product at a time. In order to keep our Tito's prices, the hottest vodka on the market right now, I had to buy six months' worth several months ago. So 940-something cases came into that building to get their prices down below where they would be from the distributor, while still creating the profit for the county.
In further answer to Mr. Cannon's question about a hypothetical situation where the wholesale, where you didn't have an exclusive wholesale situation, but had to compete with the distributors, wouldn't there be a difference in the outcome for, like, a huge restaurant compared to a small restaurant, or a service club, or a fraternal organization, or something like that?
Yes. What would happen as the buying power is reduced in the dispensary? We would be forced to raise those prices, which would then be passed on to the smaller accounts, who would have to basically still buy from the dispensary. So the handful of larger accounts with greater financing would be basically given an unlevel playing field, because they'd be buying from the distributor at a price that the dispensary couldn't match. Their products, they would be getting cheaper. We know the drink prices aren't going to come down, so all it boils down to is they make more profit.
I think the only other thing that I really want to emphasize, if I might, is, at the previous session, and I listened to the tape of the entire thing, the council president and perhaps other members of the council were asking the question, what are we reviewing? What are we being asked to endorse and tell our delegates and senators that we're in favor of? Well, the only bill filed to date is Senate Bill 245, and it doesn't do at all what you've just said, Mr. Cannon.
No, it was filed in error.
Well, I've heard it was withdrawn, and I know the hearing on that was canceled, and to my knowledge, nothing else has been filed.
No.
Because I've looked at the General Assembly's website. Well, I'm glad to hear that one's been withdrawn, because it didn't do at all what you've said, and it also would open it up to an unlimited, potentially unlimited number of licenses to sell not just beer and wine, but hard liquor, because it just leaves it to the discretion of the license commissioners, how many licenses there would be. That's in contrast to the other trial balloon floated, about 10 licenses across the county, two in each council district, so it doesn't accomplish that at all. The marked-up bills that are in your materials also are not consistent with what was stated at that previous hearing. It was stated that there would be a so-called enabling legislation that would just transfer alcohol regulation powers back to the county, and then you would have a series of public hearings, and you would try to tailor alcohol regulation to be what the community desires after public hearings and so forth. This bill doesn't do that, and I don't know what bill, you know, that we're really here to, to review, since there is no, is no bill. I think-
We just haven't gotten there yet.
Well, I get that, but the legislator, there's like a filing deadline that's in days, and there's-
It's on Friday.
Okay.
We're ready to go.
That's just a couple of days. And then there's hearings on the alcohol day that the House has, is I think on the 20th, and the hearing, and the Senate is on the 24th, so why the rush, I guess, is what I'm saying. This really ought to be studied. I think there have been some voices asking for, asking for a blue-ribbon panel, where stakeholders and people who understand what's at stake here can review the situation, and where public hearings can get public input. You've heard some tonight from both sides, but I think there would be a lot more if this was out there for public hearing. I think that at least some of these proposals, the one that was evidenced in Senate Bill 245, could open this county. I mean, I'm a past president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm a 30-year bank director, and nobody is going to, you know, sing the praises of the free enterprise system any more than I am. But if you don't do this right, and you open it up to unfettered competition, you may end up here. This was the, you know, when I opened the Sunday Washington Post, this is an advertisement for Total Wine, and they already have stores in Laurel, and they have stores in Towson, and the same paper had another supplement with another ad for the same outfit. So, if you don't do this right, you know, we could have big-box stores, and we could have competition that is far and away what some of the people who hope to benefit by a change here, they would not want that. That would, you know, kill some of the small business that I think we're trying to, to help here, and keep money in this county, instead of seeing it, you know, go out of state. And they're, I think they're in 15 or 20 states, this Total Wine, this franchise approach. So, I guess one thing I haven't said, despite, I appreciate you giving me the floor for this long, alcohol is not an unmixed blessing. I mean, the country had an experiment 100 years ago with prohibition. The upshot of that was, prohibition doesn't work. Unfettered alcohol at the other end of the spectrum doesn't work either. The combination of some kind of sensible regulation has worked well, and the dispensary system and the other three licenses, there's a total of six stores that sell alcohol in this county, so we already sort of have a hybrid system at the retail level. That has worked well to keep alcohol in check. I don't think we want to see, my office is next to a bar. The police frequently come to look at tape of shenanigans that go on outside our premises. We don't, we don't need that. There's a measure of control that's brought about by the current system that we may regret if we aren't careful in what we want to replace it with. So I would urge you to take a step back, listen to those voices that are calling for a blue-ribbon panel to review this, and I hope you will give those considerations serious thought before you proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Laws. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions, councilmembers? Yes, Josh?
I've got some written down here, but I think you guys have already answered them about what effects it would have and all that, but, you know, what effects it would have on the wholesale or the retail business and the employees. You've all covered that pretty well. But I've got a question about this letter that we got here from the Assistant Attorney General.
Okay.
This is Giordano passed out. It says it wouldn't affect our disparity grant. It doesn't say that. It says it wouldn't affect the eligibility for our disparity grant. And it says, in my view, the calculation of disparity grants has no relation to whether a county has a dispensary system. The last paragraph, and there's a lot of numbers about bills and different things, in the middle, the disparity grant formula involves only local income tax rates and yield. It does not consider any other income, source of income to the counties. As a result, it's my view that eliminating the dispensary system in Wycomico County would not affect its eligibility for a disparity grant. The Attorney General's office doesn't give us our disparity grant. The delegation, the Senate, gives us and approves the disparity grant to Wycomico County, not the Attorney General's office. What this Assistant Attorney General is saying, the getting rid of the dispensary system would not affect our eligibility, it wouldn't, it's not saying that it's going to help keep it or get rid of it. So, anyway, I'll make that statement.
Thank you.
Josh?
Question, Justin, are you all legally able to deliver alcohol to the bars and restaurants?
Yes. We've been running a cost-benefit analysis on that for about the last 18 months, and we have determined that we think we can do that without hurting the profits too much. So we are actually- So we are actually actively in the process of finding a delivery vehicle.
It seems to be the biggest sticking point, I think, that we've heard the most over the last, well, five years now, I guess I've been hearing it, but...
It's the fruition of those years of me strong-arming the distributors to get better prices, which has resulted in the ability to be able to afford the delivery, which will be offset by the retail pricing as a result of our lower costs. We can recoup that money and not affect the contribution to the county budget too much. So we should be able to provide that convenience fairly shortly.
Couldn't you just put a fee on it?
Well, that will probably be part of it because one of the main distributors does the same thing. Now, I don't want to go out and say, oh, hey, look, I'm going to do you a favor, and I'm going to deliver to you. Now, give me 50 bucks.
Well, auto parts stores deliver all the time, and I'm just, you know, I just, they need this convenience. You know, we had a guy say they had a problem with going to gas to Delmar. I mean, you know, this would save them a lot of time and money and headache, just make it a little bit more streamlined for them. 18 months is a very, very long time. Maybe we can help speed that up. I don't know if we can, but I think that needs to be done.
Mr. Mitchell, you've done some investigation into this matter in the past few days. Would a simple change in the shall to may, will that, will that work?
That was the council's original, I think, at the end of the last meeting, that was where everybody was headed. But there are a lot of issues with doing that because simply changing it there, for one thing, the 240, I realize that 245 apparently has been withdrawn, but the exec had also taken 245 and made some changes. And the problem with that is, for one thing, 245, the way it was drawn, only affected package stores.
If we could, like, talk about it, like, we have the updated, like, we've been sitting here patiently waiting, and the new information was already given to them. So the new bill that covers all licenses A through D shall, will be changed to May.
I haven't seen that.
Right, I understand.
This is something that county council president spoke to me about a few days ago, and we're on board with that approach.
If you could, Mr. Mitchell, just give us a synopsis, please. Thanks.
Yeah, in essence, that was one of the big things. It wasn't going to reach the restaurants at all, but assuming that's been taken care of. The other problem is that it's going to create an issue in that, and I said in my memo, it would also affect all these other classes. So if that's a change, I haven't seen it. But there are several sections that affect the, not the licensing, but the other end of the dispensary. So Section 32306 says that the Liquor Control Board has a monopoly on the sale and distribution of the county of wine over 15.5% alcohol and liquor. 32309D states that alcoholic beverages other than wine and beer shall be purchased from the Liquor Board. So whatever, whatever bill comes up has to pick these things up too, or else you're going to have one bill saying you can, another bill saying you can't. I had suggested that if you wanted to change it, I wouldn't change it to just say you may. I would, I would say a little stronger, I would use language that said that they are permitted to purchase from any wholesale or licensed Maryland, which would include, the distributor would include dispensary. I mean, that's not, that's just so the may thing is kind of weak, if you ask me. There are other, there are other issues with it, but I, like I said, I haven't seen what these new changes were. They're not the changes that were in the briefbook.
What changes do you all have? How was that distributed? Was it an email, or how was that distributed?
Well, the Senate bill, you know, as, you know, the council knows, and we know, we didn't ask for a Senate bill to be submitted. We were working on language with the House. But what the Senate bill was, was actually enabling legislation. You said it didn't exist. It would have enabled the local board to pick how many licenses it was. That was not a bill we asked to be submitted, but that was an attempt at it, and that's since been withdrawn. But the bill that I believe, what I'm hearing from you, would be allowing, changing the shall to may, or the language Mr. Mitchell just gave, any wholesale license in Maryland for classes A through D.
I think what's really difficult is that when we talked to the delegation, and Delegate Anderton is kind of behind this, is he can't write six bills for us to choose from. Like, you know, so it has to be, we have to kind of come to a consensus to say, this is what we wanted to say. So the original one that I had sent that was in the briefbook, of course, had just talking about Class A, do we want it to look like this, and then changing shall to may. Then we obviously saw that we had different classes, obviously Class A, Class B, Class C, Class D. And so based on what that general consensus seemed to be, was that we wanted to allow our restaurant owners here to be able to purchase from whoever they wish. And so the new legislation is going to read Class A through D shall be able to, or may purchase from whoever, may purchase from the dispensary.
But it's not just restaurants. It's also civic organizations and every one of those. And to get at something I heard earlier, the, we, someone testified last time that owns a local business, and he did that as a subject matter expert. The person was not promised any sort of license or anything like that, and no license under that plan or that bill idea would have come from the executive's office. That was never an idea, that was never discussed, and I just want the public to understand that.
We recognize that.
Yeah.
I recognize that. What I'm trying to get at is, for the last couple of weeks, I know I've been working from these two mock-up bills that we had. One was an untitled House bill, the other one was 245 or something to that effect. Anyway, and not until, literally not until today or yesterday was I even made aware of the fact that there was, there were volumes of other sections to the statute that had to be addressed as well. And that's why, once it was brought to my attention, I was glad to get the phone call, I immediately called Mr. Mitchell. And I guess the question is, and Mr. Mitchell has come up with this two-page at 418 this afternoon. So we're at a bit of a disadvantage because I would have liked to have been working on this two weeks ago. So I'm curious as to how, why, why when a bill was drafted, or two different bills were drafted, none of these other sections had been taken into consideration, what legal, what legal advice we were being given to guide us on the particulars of what did or didn't, may or may not needed to have been amended.
So these were the bill drafters in Annapolis. So when we explained to Delegate Anderton exactly what we wanted, he took it to them, and what they did was they took the Class A as an example, changing shall to may. So it didn't help us in that aspect because I think, you know, in this new legislation that they're looking to put forward, it would actually cover all of the classes, from what I've understood.
Did you say that you now had that for us?
He was waiting to hear from you all. Like, he was waiting to hear from this session because, again, they're not going to, he's not going to waste the bill drafter's time to draft three, four, or five different bills, and then for us to say yes, no, and get to pick that. So the idea was, if the council decides this is what we want to do, then he would base the bill off that and get it to you. So, I assume, right? I mean, I'm going to make sure that I'm saying that right. Also, I just want to say too, I take, just a little bit, I just wanted to put this on the record, I take offense to the comment made by the gentleman who provided, actually, this picture. I would just like it on the record that my administration is business-friendly and a supporter of small businesses. This is not for votes, and none of us did this for votes. And once you're in office, you represent the concerns of all people. The other thing I'd like to say to you two gentlemen is, you keep saying, my store, my store, this store, you know, our store. So if this is really a county entity, you really are taking a personal, like, feeling towards this. This is nothing personal, okay? The way your dispensary works is not business-friendly, period. There is no online ordering, there is no delivery system, and people have been blackballed from your store because they spoke out against it. Different liquors they were not allowed to get. And when you have...
Let's not get into, I don't want to attack anyone on the table here.
No, no, I'm not attacking. I'm just stating facts of why this is happening.
Because we don't know if that's corroborating.
Well, I was attacked too, Councilman, President Cannon.
I appreciate it.
I was attacked too.
I understand.
So I'm just stating the fact that...
These gentlemen are here to sort of help us.
Yeah, but I'm explaining why. And the thing is, is that we still have asked for numbers, okay? President Cannon asked for numbers, Director of Administration asked you for your numbers. We put in a FOIA and had legal, and we still have not gotten the numbers that we need.
Where'd you send that Freedom of Information Act request?
That Mr. Wilber's working on that.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Mr. Wilber, that's right. Yeah, so he's working on that. So three different...
It hasn't happened yet.
Okay, but three people have asked you.
I have literally requested that, and I sent a transcript to this, to council president today documenting where, way back in December, I started asking. And what we asked for was something simple, and it's something the county council presidents asked for previously, is can we get these numbers by categories such as liquor? And then I asked for ETA on when we could get it, and that, there's, it's non-responsive.
Right. So, yeah, I'm just saying, this is year after year, and like, you know, Pete said from Adams, 31 years. We'll do it next year, we'll do it next year, we'll do it next year. And that's what's getting ready to happen. I hear it, you know, we're going to do it next year. So if we're going to do it, we're going to do it. And to sit here and say, well, you know, we're keeping things regulated, we are one of two counties. Montgomery County is the only other county, and if they bring in $28 million, we bring in less than a million. So, you know, to sit here and say that this is regulating liquor and whatever else, again, as Councilman Baker pointed out, if he's going to go get liquor, he's going to go get his liquor. You know what I mean? So like, people, you know, so it's just such a moot point.
I think what we're trying to figure out is exactly what we're going to do.
Right, understood.
Mr. Mitchell, let's go back to you again, because you did take the time to do it, and I really appreciate it. I didn't expect you were going to come up with two pages. What's your assessment as far as legally, how we're going to address this? Honestly, I mean, this, this work session, I thought we were going to have a may shall and 5,000 from a $4,400 license fee. We have a lot more here. That's pretty much what we had said, and I was pointing out that while you're doing that, there's several other things that have to be handled. Now it's moving into all the, all the different license categories. That was one of the issues. It's still, and here's the problem, there's nothing to look at. So I think, and maybe Delegate Adams would comment on this, I think unless the council, you know, is in support, that it's got little chance of passing, but the council has nothing to look at to support. I don't really know where we go from here. The original plan, I understood from Bunky's presentation, was an enabling legislation, which would let the county take everything back, then during the next, during the next few months, and probably around October, they would have a bill based with public hearings and things like that. But nothing that we've seen even approaches that. And I understand that's the drafters, it's not necessarily the presenters, but at this point, it doesn't go in that direction. So all you're looking at is, is a statement that is probably going to cover all the, all the licenses, and it's going to allow them to buy from any licensed wholesaler, any Maryland licensed wholesaler, and that's pretty much it. I mean, I don't know that, is there anything else? And then some of the bills that were marked up in the briefbook would keep the idea that it's still free, you know, private sales. And other, and some other markup had it taking it out, like it did originally in 245. I don't know where we stand on that. That was one of the things that, when the exec and Bunky presented this, they were saying that issue would be discussed in the public hearings and things like that. And I'm right on that, right?
Well, and just a clarification, when I say enabling legislation, I don't mean, especially in the liquor realm, that the county would take over every single liquor regulation in the state. The General Assembly would not allow that. What I was talking about is enabling legislation to allow our county to choose at that time how many dispensaries or how many businesses could operate in a private sector in competition with our dispensary, and whether or not the private sector could buy wholesale or not. That was it. I wasn't saying, and that was, unfortunately, that was what, I guess Mr. Laws got out of it, but that was not what I was saying, because that couldn't happen. The state and the committees this would go through are never going to give the county 100% power. Those were the two things we're...
I think that's how we ended up not getting that, but Mr. Laws and I, two attorneys, listened to it, and we both came up with the same understanding. So I guess it was just some confusion as to how it came out, but...
And the open-ended language that is in there, it would be to the Board of License Commissioners to decide the number.
No, that's all, that has been struck.
And that's not at all the type of...
That's been completely struck, Mr. Laws.
It's irrelevant right now.
Yeah. I understand the frustration with the confusion, but that has been struck. I don't think anyone here wants more than the six that we currently have, period. That actually is in, in some of these drafts, you know, that's what I'm saying. We don't even know where it is.
There was a new draft that was sent, and I'm sorry because I didn't include you on it. That was my fault.
Those were older drafts before myself and the county council residents spoke.
John. Have you overridden this on Joe?
Yes, so, yeah, so, President Cannon and Bunky spoke, how many days ago?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday, okay, so changes have been made based on, yeah, so, yes.
So do we have a cleaned up copy of this bill, other than what's in the...
We don't because we, again, so the bill drafters aren't going to draft us like six different bills for us to choose from. So once we heard from you all what we wanted to do, we literally are making the phone call, this is what we wanted to say, and then we would put it in front of you. But again, it's hard because this is a very controversial topic, and so we're trying to get the general consensus. I can't in my office just draft a bill or get them to draft a bill and just put it in front of you and say, hey, vote on this. Like, as a work session, we really wanted to try to get that back and forth to make sure that we were getting this right, so that way everybody was on board. So again, in the work session, we were trying to work together rather than just presenting something for the council to say yea or nay to.
I guess what the real question is, we...
What does it look like?
We're, yeah, right, yeah, we don't have that.
Mm-hmm.
That's what you hear from them. Is this something that Mr. Wilber would draft, or...
I mean, I'm assuming it would be the bill drafters in Annapolis. So they're on standby, ready after this meeting.
So it sounds like what we want to try, maybe do, I don't want to speak for everyone, is to have it say, may, that you may be able to buy from a distributor or dispensary, but it sounds like we don't want to expand the amount of liquor stores.
Not at this time. Just for this bill would be may to shall. I mean, shall to may, sorry.
Shall to may, that way, there's an option.
Correct. From Class A to D.
Mr. Mitchell, and I know that we have some folks here from the Liquor Control Board sitting back there. Has Article 2B been explored extensively to see what changes this could be, what changes this would make, and is it permitted through Article 2B? Is there any hangups there?
This is, this is under the alcohol beverage article, but, yeah, I've talked at some real length with the licensing attorney, and we went through quite a number of steps that would have to be changed. Because when you look at all the different licenses, some specifically require purchase only from the dispensary, some are silent. But the two sections I quoted before, both would sort of pick up the ones that were silent. So you could probably have some overriding one that says, for all the following, it's now amended, but normally you go through and say that you're mending each one of those to take that out. This only applies to Wycomico County, anyway.
So if we did the permitted or may as a bill, that might not carry anyway because of something that's in Article 2B, correct? It might not carry any weight.
Yeah, 32306 and 309, both are mandatory. I don't know what, at that point, if you have one that's mandatory and one that's permissive, I think you've got a problem. You really ought to clean that up when you have an opportunity. The other thing is, we're talking about, even in the new legislation, they're talking about licensing A to D. There's also the golf course license. The others are a little bit less, I guess, important, the banquet license, the conference center, the dinner theater, entertainment things, but, but they would, and they may not be big deals, but they're not in it. So if they want them in it, they would have to put them there.
I never have gotten an understanding of what the question I ask. I'm sorry. I'm a little sick of it.
Yeah, I think you have to change a number of... Yeah, I think you'd have to change a number of, you'd have to change a number of places.
But, anyway, what I'm saying is, if, if we put this legislation as, going as permitted and send it, you know, to, she says to the grant writers, and this is Julian, Julian, says, "Send it to the grant writers."
Bill draft-
Is there something, Bill drafters, is there something going to be in Article 2B that's going to hang it up, and it's not going to go anywhere? That's what I'm asking.
I mean, if the bill drafters, I, I would say if they do their job, they would go through and find these things and want to inquire as to whether you want them changed also, or tell you they have to be changed, or the other thing won't work. But it's, it's not just a walk in the park.
But shouldn't we know that before we put that forward?
I would think so.
Okay.
So, they'd have to, the bill drafters would have to draft this and get this back to us first. I'm not quite sure how that's going to play into what the deadlines are in Annapolis.
Okay. We'll let them know.
Right. Any, any questions?
If I can, I, I think the only way this has any chance of working is if the council gives some sort of idea as to what they're looking for. And it, and it may be just that, to change that, make it permissive. And nothing else is changing. If that's it, it shouldn't be that hard for them to change, to do a-
Can't do that without having a public hearing. We have to have a public hearing before we make, make that decision, correct?
Well, yeah, I understand that. What I'm saying is, is-
I, I thought you meant do it right now. I'm sorry.
No, no, I meant, I, I meant that, well, well, that's true. You got, because I, I was thinking it would be sort of a consensus, but no, it really shouldn't be. It, it should be based, yeah, you're right.
You will get something together that we would definitely be able to look at.
Sure. Yep. So, and then, and that's consensus on what we wanted to say. Licenses, May, show, okay, show to May. Okay. Yep.
Well, that's, as Joe said, that will eventually have to come to a public hearing before they say that's for real. Okay.
Yes, Josh.
Yeah, I just add on to it. I still want clarity on the disparity grant piece. It's nice to be able to have the Attorney General say that the law, two different laws are not connected to each other. Of course, they're not. But, and I, I look to, of course, our, our Delegate Adams. But, you know, the, the difference of whether the chairman, you know, I don't, I don't want to know what the Attorney General thinks. I want to know what the Chairman of Appropriations Committee thinks. If we make a move and we lose $10 million, $12 million, pardon me.
So, there are ten counties that have the disparity grant?
Correct.
All of them don't have a dispensary system. All of those counties still get their disparity grant.
The, the disparity grant is not a, it is, to be clear, that is a grant given for our use carte blanche as we want, right?
So, Somerset just did that.
Sure. That is given from the taxpayers of other individuals from across the state who give their hard-working dollars to us. There is no reason for them to continue to do that. If we say specifically, we as a county aren't looking after our own finances, I think, you know, the, the former attorney, Mr. Taylor, actually mentioned, you know, the difference in property rates for Baltimore City. They don't really have too much more, you know, ability to raise their property tax, whereas we have a significant amount. So, what we're saying, not that, I'm saying we should do that, but to be clear, but, but we are not, we are not showing the state of Maryland that we are doing a good job in managing our money. What we're showing the state of Maryland is that-
Do you not hear PKS? They did great.
Is that we are taking, we are taking other people's taxpayer dollars from across the state and putting it in a reserve account for ourselves. So, what I'm saying, and what the Speaker pro tem has warned us, is that if you make the wrong move, you lose, you could lose the disparity grant. And that is, that is up to the General Assembly to decide. That is not up to the Attorney General as to whether that happens or not. So-
I think this letter was just showing it's two separate things completely from an entity in Annapolis stating it.
So, what I would, what I'd like to have-
You know it's two separate things, but there's no guarantee.
Yes. Well, what I-
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't think it ever is. They could take it, I mean, there, it isn't. But what I'm saying is Somerset, literally last year, has disparity grant. They got rid of their dispensary system, and they still have their disparity grant. So, it was not threatened to be taken away.
Do they have a revenue cap also?
No, they do not.
So, what I'm getting at is that what it'd be best to have is to actually have, I mean, say what you will about the liquor system and like, all these other issues, and this is a very, this is about as hairy as an issue as you get in all the applications. We still have this other issue that we are highly dependent upon the state. And so, it'd be best to be able to get some sort of assurance from the Chair of the Appropriations Committee to be able to say whether or not, you know, this, that we are actually putting ourselves in a vulnerable position. So, I throw that out there. If you can get that in the meantime, that would be helpful. But, and then I'll also, I'll end it by saying, you know, we can't have the public come and comment. As much as I would love for us to be able to make a decision right here and now, everything would be fixed. We'd all be in great shape. That's obviously not the way things work. If any bit of any one of these changes from a golf course to a, you know, to a, to a restaurant, to the distributors, all of those affect people directly in our county, and they'll want to speak up on the issue. And so, for us to not have something to go to them and to say, "Hey, this is what we want your understanding, Wycomico County residents. We want you to speak up on this." We don't have that to give to, to, to Mr. Anderton, to then give to bill drafters. So, what I'm saying is, we're in a, if we have to take nine months to come together and have a bill that makes perfect sense, and everybody can hold hands and say, "Yeah, we like it," or "We generally think it's okay," I think that's worthwhile. But what I'm saying is, be careful, obviously, and not rush something to put us in a bad position. And I trust, I trust you all in doing that. But also, if you can get natural assurances from, you know, from the leadership, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
In, in the offer to get the drafting to bring, put a bill forward, we're asking that for a bill that the council can look for, not for a bill that goes on the floor or gets put into committee. So, I don't see any more of those.
Absolutely. 100% agree. We're right there with you.
She see me in that.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
Cart before the horse.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much again, Mr. Collins. Thank you. And Mr. Laws, thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
Yes, Jeff.
One quick question. I, I don't think we've talked about the leases on your buildings. I believe your county buildings?
No.
No.
They're leased.
They pay their-
Leased from shopping center owners.
Okay. And who, who holds the lease?
The dispensary.
Okay.
They're, they're a party.
So, if three, five, 10 years down the road, you guys are unable to compete, how long is the lease good for? I would think, I was told 2035?
Two thousand. They vary. I think, I think at least one is that long. Yeah.
All, all three.
So, if you guys are unable to compete, then that, who, who pays the lease?
I don't know whether Mr. Mitchell has looked at this one, but I think there's an interesting question about that. There's some, I think, kind of ambiguous language in the statute that makes it unclear. And I'm talking about 32310B of the alcoholic beverage article, and it says, "After repayment," it's complicated, but it has to do with the reserve that the county has a role in establishing. And, "Subject to the approval of the County Council, the reserve fund is supposed to be created to provide adequate working capital and cover any losses sustained by the Liquor Control Board in operating the dispensary." So, the unanswered question in that language is, what would happen if there are losses that the reserve cannot cover? So, I think there's an implication that the county may have some responsibility there. And I think they have stepped up to the plate in the other counties that abandoned their dispensaries, although those may have been owned buildings instead of leases.
Okay. Thank you.
But I don't think we're cutting their legs out from under them. I mean, if we were taking, you know, if we were losing $900,000 in revenue, I'd say that might be the case, but it's much more limited than that.
I'm just trying to answer the legal question.
I appreciate it.
Whether the county may have responsibility, and it looks to me like it may.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is that Article 2B, Mr. Laws?
Well, 2B was replaced by the alcoholic beverage title. But it is, I mean, as a, just an indication of how intricate this is, my code is probably three shelves of books like this. Four of them are just alcoholic beverages. I mean, it is, it's a mine, it's a minefield. And to try to do it within two months of the executive taking office is, I would just submit-
Well, I think they've been trying to do it for, like, 10 years.
Well, or Pete says 30 years.
Or 30. 30, Pete. Yeah, 30. So, you know, we're just trying to get the ball rolling.
I get it, but I-
Like, so this is something that, that's been on the table for a while.
I think it's a lot to ask a new council and a new executive to get this done in 60 days.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Laws.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.